Good evening and welcome to the Quarry Valley Unified Union School District, November 15th meeting. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Lisa, did we want to add personnel to executive session?
Do you want to do that?
Probably, but however you want to organize it, it's fine.
Okay, I just was asking because I know there's a question.
We should probably have it before we have the public discussion on that, just so everybody knows what the deal is.
Or do you want to just move it to executive session and then we could just have it at the end?
Sure, we can do that.
All right, so we are going to move the contract recommendations to executive session. So with that change, Mike makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
No, I'll second.
Second by Sarah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. General public comments. Is there anyone joining us that wishes to make a public comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on. Old business. Is there any old business to come before the board? Hearing none. New business. Any new business to come before the board? Moving on to the consent agenda. Approval of minutes, October 18th. A motion would be in order to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Nate, second by Mike. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Approval of warrants. You receive your warrants in your GRCSU email. All questions should be directed to Louis. A motion would be in order to approve the warrants. My work quiet group this evening.
I also want to approve the ones.
Motion by Sarah, second.
I'll second.
Second by Nate. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Superintendent's report. Chris?
Thanks, Lisa. As you can see, it is a lengthy report, so I'll just go through a couple of highlights. I first just wanted to congratulate Proctor, the Proctor High School girls varsity soccer team on, I know Jen, I'm probably stealing your thunder, but you can do a much better job than I will, but I just want to congratulate them on a three-peat. They won two weekends ago, so it congratulates them. I'll stop there, Jen, I'll let you kind of go on all the details of that. I also want to just kind of quickly touch upon the test to stay. We did start this today at our schools. I want to say thanks to the administrators, the nurses, the staff members, the parents for all their hard work, their patience and understanding. I know it's something we've been talking about, but fortunately I was over at West Rutland today, you know, just kind of watching this and it was like a well-oiled machine. I know we heard some positive things about the other schools as well, but we were able to, through this, across the SU, keep 88 kids back in the school. And I think that's one of the positives of test to stay, is that prior to this, that we would have had 88 students sitting at home trying to figure out what their education looks like, but through the hard work of our administration, the staff, the nurses, you know, I said, the families, you know, we were starting to kind of see a bit of a change in how we can respond to this. And I, like I said, I just wanted to say thank you, but I know that some, today, parents were frustrated in some of our schools with response times and some parents had to wait a little longer. We are working through logistics and through some kinks. It is day one. I think with each iteration, we will get better. Lessons learned from today, we'll use that, you know, apply it to all of our schools, you know, for day two and three or four of our schools tomorrow, but, you know, it looks to be a positive thing. I'd also want to remind our families that this is also dependent upon a supply chain, that, you know, we are, you know, we do rely upon the state to provide us with these antigen tests, and right now, we're very fortunate that we have a good supply to get us through the next couple of weeks, and hopefully that's, you know, when we, that supply, you know, starts to whittle down, they'll replenish it with us. But it's not just as simple as us going to Walgreens or Kenny Drug and picking up tests. We have to rely on the state to provide this. So, you know, like I said, our goal is that this will continue for as long as we need to, but like I said, just, you know, we're just encouraging, you know, patience. One of the concerns that was expressed by family about test to stay was what that would do in terms of just prioritize, you know, where our priorities would lie with school. Right now, test to stay is the number one priority. Surveillance testing is something which we still would like to have. I know that, you know, the winter sports guidance talked about if there was an unvaccinated student athlete, that they would have to do, undergo weekly testing, so we'll look at surveillance testing there. And also, we're waiting to hear back from the state with regard to a potential vaccine mandate for employees. If that's the case, then if there's a staff member who could not be vaccinated for whatever reason, that there would be weekly testing. So our priorities still are going to stay with test to stay, because like I said, our goal is to get the kids back into class and minimize disruptions. So, you know, that's not going to change. A couple of other things, as I said, there's a winter sports guidance. We all should have received that and taken a look at that, but our goal is to get families back into the gyms, to watch our, you know, our kids play, participate. I think it's important, not just for families, but also for the students. But what we do ask is just that, you know, we have to wear masks, it's just something that's, you know, we're requiring all families to do, you know, audience members, please, you know, like I said, that's just, in order for us to have the kids play, participate, that's just something we were asking everybody, just that one little sacrifice. I know, you know, it frustrates me wearing a mask, you know, all day long and when I'm out to other places as well, but it'd be important for us just to, when you're at the games, you know, whether it be Proctor, or West Rutland, or Polley, or any one of those facilities, whether it be a fifth, sixth grade game, or a varsity game, please just wear the mask and just do the things we need to do. Just, you know, that'd be great. So, the rest really is just, you know, other things along the lines. We just have, you know, I'm sorry, one more thing. I'm kind of all over the place because there's a lot in this report, and I don't know, there's a lot of things to touch upon, but S-Back testing. We will be releasing individual reports probably the next week or so. So I think, you know, we've asked, you know, building principals to start working with that, so the goal is that with report cards or during conferences, that individual S-Back reports will be coming out to families. So your building principals have a little more information for you on that. The group reports, which I know the board is always interested in, still is embargoed, so we will have a group report probably in January for the boards to review at that time. Okay? And that's really about it for me. There really is a lot along the lines of COVID and winter sports, as well as just briefly touched upon S-Back.
All right, any questions for Chris?
Chris, this is Chris Cross. I just had a question about the outreach for getting community participation in the strategic plan for our graduate. Have you had any responses yet? I know that notification went out really recently, but I just didn't know if you had any positive response from the community about that.
We have had responses. Thanks, Kristin. And so we're looking at some alternate ways of communicating. I spoke with Christine McGinnis this morning about Front Porch Forum, about potentially getting on some social media, you know, getting on websites as well, but as most of you are aware of, that we are beginning the process of the Porter Graduate and strategic plan for the GRCSU. It will run the length of, for the length of this year. There are five meetings. We do ask anybody who's interested, you know, to be a part of that, that they can attend all five meetings. And right now, the first meeting will be virtual, just, you know, understanding where we're at with, you know, in our communities, with COVID, it just being, you know, so we're not trying to limit anyone's participation. But I think as we move into later in the year, we'll kind of wait to see what's going on and where we're at, where our comfort level is. But, you know, if you're interested to be a part of this design team and, you know, helping shape the vision for not just Quarry Valley, not just your schools, but the SU, please reach out to your building principal or Christine McGinnis. But we will have a kind of a multi-tiered approach to that as well, Kristin. Okay. Thanks for asking.
Any other questions?
Just an observation. Thank you for the data that's being put together in the principal's report, the consistency, and thank you.
All right, and it is important for families and those that will be entering our schools to watch the games, which we certainly want community in the game, in the schools to watch the games, but to wear their masks. And really, if we think about it as being respectful to the teams that are playing, that's going to ensure that we can continue to play by following those rules. So we certainly ask that you all wear your masks and, you know, it's nothing that we want to do, it's something that we need to do so that we can continue to play. All right, thank you. Moving on to principals' reports. Kristin?
Thank you, Lisa. Hello, everyone. Sorry, my camera's off. I don't want to lose service. So as Chris said, we did our first test to stay this morning, and it did take a little bit longer than anticipated, but we did debrief after, and I think we have a very good plan moving forward tomorrow. We just had to, you know, work the bucks out, as Superintendent Sell said, and tomorrow, I think we're well on our way to doing a better job. But I do want to thank everyone for pitching in today. Nurse Ticarrelli, Doctor Chick, I had volunteers from my staff, and I just, it really takes all of us, and I just want to give a huge thank you to them, so. Moving right along, we do have parent teacher conferences this Thursday and Friday. Most parents have signed up for virtual ones at this time, and teachers will be reviewing S-Back scores as well as jump rope information during the conferences. Some really fun things going on. I hope you didn't have a chance to check out the pictures, because despite everything, there's a lot of happy faces at our school, and I'm really proud of the teachers and the kids for working so hard and just pulling together during this crazy time. I'd like to talk about our fall fest. It was very chilly. We had upwards of 75-plus families, and even though it got really, really cold, I think it was really successful, and it was all student-led, so it speaks a lot to the leadership of your students when they can plan and organize events and activities like that for the community. PTO, you see them probably in the pictures, you can realize how cold it was. Thank you for handing out spider and gum nits. And, yeah, I think that's it.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Kristen? All right, moving on to Joe, who was with us here tonight.
Good evening, everybody. I'll echo what Kristen was saying with our test to, or test to stay program. We just had a handful of kids this morning, but it went as well as it could be. I even got trained in how to do it, so it's not that difficult. It's one of those, if I can do it, anybody can do it type things. Our, we were talking about the winter sports, and my encouragement, our band concert is going to be in-person. Our band director, Eric Ray, is going to be limiting, sent an email out this morning asking families to limit the number of people that are there. We're going to set the chairs up so people are socially distancing, but, you know, excited to have that coming back, and it's mid-December, so hopefully everything goes well. Also, last week, our students went to Castle and University for a play that the Castle and students put on, and we had middle school students as well as high school students go, and I walked into the middle school class at the end of the day, asked how they liked it, and I had eighth graders telling me they loved it. The one girl says, "I talked through the whole thing," and I kind of looked at her funny, and she's like, "No, it was a murder mystery," and we were trying to figure out who did it, so we were like trying to, so the kids were engaged. The teacher, Leila Brooks, that brought them, said it was great. Abby Bennett was in our building today. We're looking at the universal screener data. There's a lot of stuff to go through, it was kind of a lot of information there, so looking forward to desegregating all that and helping our kids out where we can. And I know you were asked about our senior trip. I met with our senior class advisor last month. Right now, there are three locations that they're looking at, they're kind of waiting for the class to vote on it, and they're going to start, you know, planning stuff within the next few weeks, trying to get dates lined up.
Any questions for Joe? Moving on to Christie. Thank you, Joe.
Hi, good evening, everybody. We have my printed report. I can just give you a few highlights. We were super excited to have Trick or Treat this year. We didn't really go through that last year. We had over 100 folks in the community attending Trick or Treat, parents and students, and a lot of students, or I would say, young children from outside of the Park community came this year, which was a little bit different than past. We had the staff, I think we had four trumps, a little bit of staff. It was really fun, great event for sure. Our book fair this year, we broke a record in the last couple of years. So Lisa Petrucci, a fair educator that works in the library, coordinated that, and she had to sign up for families to sign up, so they were socially different, they could either come after school, she stayed late a few days, a weekend, and the students were able to shop for their library time, so she offered her work. I would also like to echo the other principals and making the nurses. I think our nurses are putting in a ton of time on the weekends. I know, like I try to save my weekends, like, you know, my whole hospital weekends, but we are tying up their weekends, every weekend, kind of tracking, seeing what the, you know, numbers look like for the next day, so I definitely hope all of you are very appreciative of our nurses. We had our last virtual parent workshop this week. It's been working with a group called Changing Perspectives. So our school counselor, myself, and the coordinator have been working with families, just to help families with social, emotional things that are happening at home, and definitely that we've given a full on kids, both at home and in the school, so we've been working closely to provide some free trainers for families. We had, Jen, I'll let you talk about the assembly, okay? I'm not going to say anything. We had an assembly, we stayed with some high school, I won't steal Jen's thunder because she has nothing to talk about. So I'll let you talk about it here, okay? I just thought, I was like, yeah, no, I won't do it. Again, we have parent teacher conferences, we're hoping all families sign up. If families do not sign up, we've been having our school counselor have been like connecting with every single parent to be able to report, and hopefully we're going to have a consistent briefing at their home. Thanksgiving break is next week. Students, with the, same as Kristen, will be sharing our S-Back scores and our mask testing, our enrollment is there. Does anybody have any questions or comments or anything? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Jen, your time to shine.
I respectfully ask to go before everyone next time. So, congratulations to Arlady Phantoms. They were the four state champions with a 6-1 win over Arlington. A lot of Crocker Phantoms showed up to encourage our girls. It was great to see everyone there, although they pulled ahead 5-0 in the first half, it never felt like they let go or they stopped playing hard. So congratulations to them on their three-peat. Last Wednesday, we had a school-wide assembly with a semi-concert from Jared Campbell. He used to open for Journey. For any of the, the kids didn't know what that was, but they did know Chase the Grass. And so after the day was over, I was talking to some students, and they said, "Do you know Miss McQuarrie? This actually feels like normal school again." So it was kind of, felt good to hear something like that. And they went over to the elementary, did a couple shows there. So I think he was really well-received by everyone, teachers and students were telling me they loved him. And then this weekend, we had our performance of The Legend of Sleepy Hollow, which the theater department reports it is their highest audience that they've had in a few years. So obviously, the COVID played into that, but even before, they felt like really encouraged by the number of fans that showed up just for the program. I also included in my report some proposals for senior class trip, senior banquet, and a prom. I mean, we have some pie-in-the-sky dreamers out there, but I wanted to give you kind of all of the options that they were looking for, and how much they would need to fund raise in order to do that, if the board was able to help at all, that'd be appreciated. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much for the, for the handouts about class trips and proms and like that. That'll be helpful for the board as we plan and see how we can help moving forward. Thank you. Jay?
Good evening, everybody. We also were, as Chris mentioned, we had our test to stay this morning. We thought it actually went very well. Just to put it in perspective, it meant that over 20 students today did not need to quarantine, so that was wonderful. You can see from my principal's report that there's an enormous amount going on. Everything from our Halloween parade, to our Up For Morning work with the district, to the work with the CDL group on instructional leadership, virtual coffee house, virtual holiday concert coming up, and return of the spelling bee. So that is all really, really good things. I've updated, Mr. Harrington has helped me update all the things that we have for fundraising, and also our senior class trips. Those are things that he helps oversee. And, you know, just a lot going on at West Rutland School these days. I echo what Christie said. I want to give a big shout-out to our staff, to our nurse. We had a case last week in Veterans Day, or on Veterans Day, and it was all hands-on-deck. We had five people in the office for the vast majority of the day, because we did not want to wait till Friday to notify parents that they would have to quarantine, and it was too early for tests to stay. So whatever we can do to keep the kids in school is what we're all doing. So I just want to thank everyone for their support. It's been a long, long couple of weeks, even though we're only into mid-November, it's been an interesting school year so far. Did not know if folks had questions that I could answer at this time.
Any questions for Jay? All right, thank you very much for your reports. We all appreciate how they're put together and how informative they are, and it's great to see on the cover page from everyone this year, all the activities that are happening in school. And I would say, echo Jen's, students that say it does seem like there is a bit of normalcy coming back when we have plays and band concerts and all of these kinds of activities. It's, it's positive to see that, I think, and it's encouraging. So thank you all very much. All right, moving on to personnel. We're moving contract recommendations to executive session, so if you could put that aside. We'll move on to, we have retirements from West Rutland for Don Chiron, the librarian. A motion would be in order to accept her retirement with regrets.
Make the motion.
Motion by Mike. Second?
Kristen Rosso, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We also have in your packet a leave request. Is there anything you want to speak to about that, Chris, or that you recommend the leave request?
No, I'd recommend this leave request.
A motion would be in order to approve the leave request for Leila Brooks, an English instructor at Polley High School.
Kristen Ross, I'll move to approve the leave.
Second?
I'll second.
Second by Nate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. You also have in your packet for information only vacancies across the SU. And we will move on to finance. Louis?
Good evening, everyone. So I have a few things on the agenda tonight. I'm going to do them a little bit out of words, we'll leave budget to last. So the first one I'm going to go over is the budgeting tool. This was in the packet, we talked about this a couple months ago, regarding, the discussion started with zero-based budgeting and line-by-line budgeting, and based on that discussion, it was decided that board members could benefit from a little cheat sheet to use during the budgeting process. So this is done to all of the boards and to the GRCSU board, and it's just a little cheat sheet to help you through the process. It just outlines our account code structure and what each piece of that account code structure identifies and what it means, as well as on the back, some of the common items you would find that fits into those most common accounts that we will use, both function codes and object codes. We don't actually need it, just something to use this year for budgeting, it's all a cheat sheet. It's pretty, stay pretty constant throughout the year. Any questions?
Just want to say thank you for this, Louis. That's nice. I'm going to make a hard copy and carry around.
You're welcome.
For the wife.
All right, the next item, announced tuition. So each year, we have to set a tuition price for both our elementary and secondary students who are coming to our school from out of district. So there was a sheet in the packet with what the current announced tuition rate is for Quarry Valley, as well as for some of these other schools in our area, as well as my recommended FY23 announced tuition rate. So looking at that for both, let's start with elementary. So right now, our announced tuition is $15,000, which is the same as well as Springs and Rutland Town, as well as Slate Valley. And then Rutland City is $11,600, Mill River is $16,750, and the state average is $15,513. We've raised this every year by about $500. I felt our tuition rate is pretty much in line with some other schools in the area. So my recommendation would be keep it constant at $15,000. We don't get a lot of elementary, some elementary tuition students, a lot of ours are secondary, so that would be my recommendation, would be $15,000. Secondary, we currently have an announced tuition rate of $17,500. Rutland Town is $15,000, Rutland City is $16,700, Slate Valley is $17,000, Mill River is $16,600, and the average is $16,842. And so on this one, we do have a lot of secondary students that come in through all three of our high schools, but due to the fact that our rate is the high, one of the highest in the areas, my recommendation would be keep that constant.
Any questions? It's interesting that Mill River has a higher elementary rate than high school rate.
And that would be because typically, the elementary schools are smaller, populated and small enrollments, so it actually costs more for them to run their elementary schools than does their high school, because they all tuition, because they all are part of the Union High School and is a lot larger, the cost to run the high school is cheaper than the elementary school.
All right. Any questions about staying the tuition rate at $15,000 for the elementary and $17,500 for secondary? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to approve the FY23 tuition rate.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Nate. Second?
Kristen Rosso, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so the next, I think, we'll go to budget, and then we'll come back to the Okay, so the next, I think, we'll go to budget, and then we'll come back to budget afterwards, because I think some of the budget discussion will impact that discussion. Okay, so in the packet was the Corry Valley budget for the first draft. It should be, it's an 18-page document. The first page is the summary of all the changes for both the district-wide as well as each school, and then you have about 17, 16 pages worth of details, and we'll go through some of that, and then some supporting information in the back. So right now, just skipping just to the total, and then we'll come back to the details. You can find the total budget impact is on page 14. Total expenditures are up by $762,000, which is 4.14%. And total education spending is up by $295,000, or 1.73%. Education spending is the amount we have to raise in property taxes. It's the total expense minus our local revenue. Local revenue is anything other than property taxes, so includes any tuition revenue, any surplus revenue, and then some of the smaller revenue items such as interest income, student activity, and stuff like that. So the difference between total expense and education spending would indicate that we have a large increase in revenue, which we'll go over in a minute. So based on our discussion last month, the board gave us the direction to include what the administrators were looking for their buildings and what they identified as needs. So this question right here in front of you includes all of those items, and it identifies on page one what each of those items is. So looking at page one, to go over the summary of changes, district-wide level, special ed disallow increased by $94,000, and this is due to an increase in estimates at the SU. As we looked at the actuals last year, our special ed staff was spending more time doing regular ed duties and activities, and therefore have less special ed eligible time. So to become more in line with actuals, we increased those estimates at the SU. SU assessments are based on the first draft of the SU budget that was presented in October. We'll be looking at the second draft on Wednesday. The general funds decreased, the general fund assessment increased by $28,000, and special ed assessment increased by $53,000. Sarah, do you have a question?
Sorry to interrupt, just before we get more into the weeds, and this is a newbie question, so forgive me. What is a disallow in this context?
Okay, so we do spend a lot of time discussing this mostly at the SU level, but usually at year-end, we talk about it at the district level. So all of our special ed staff are at the SU level, but not 100% of their time is spent doing special ed activities. So for example, a special ed para we're budgeting, it's 20% of their time is doing non-special ed activities. So that would include working with regular ed students, doing regular ed duties such as recess or lunch duty, or whatever else they're assigned to do in the buildings that's not working with IEP students. So any time that they're working with non-IEP students, we call that special ed disallowed time. So because 100% of this outage came through the special ed budget, we then pull out that percentage as an estimate of what that disallowed time is, and then we true it up at the end of the year, based on time studies that each staff member does, each special ed staff. Okay, so after the assessment, we have a decrease in capital debt payments of $189,000, and that's mainly due to paying off, there was a property bond in the last payments being made this year. It includes a 5.2% increase in health insurance premiums, which is approximately $62,000. FY21 surplus was $1.3 million, and we talked about that in August. So this is an item that we'll need to discuss further, but currently we have language that was approved by the voters last year that allows us to put 50% of that surplus into a capital maintenance fund, and another article that allowed us to put 20% of that surplus into an athletic fund. So the budget that you have in front of you is putting 50%, approximately 50%, I just chose even numbers, $650,000 into the capital improvement fund, and 20% of $250,000 into the athletic fund. That leaves a remainder of $416,000 that's in this budget as a FY23 revenue. So that's one of the reasons why our education spending is down, because that surplus is higher than the previous year's surplus.
So Louis, we're going to move on. So that 50% for capital maintenance and 20%, was it the wording up to that amount so we could, if we wanted to decide later, we could go lower than those percentages you got there? But you chose sort of the maximum to give us a sense.
That is correct. So we'll need to discuss that during the budget process. If we feel we want to put more towards revenue and lower the education spending amount, we can adjust those. These are sort of the maximum, and like I said, I rounded, so I think it was actually slightly more that we could put into this, but I just rounded to the whole numbers. The only, so the only, one of the negative parts about putting too much as a revenue is that when we look at FY24 budgets, if we don't have a large surplus in FY22, then we'll have a decrease in revenue when we're looking at the following year's budget. So by putting money into these funds allows us to keep our revenue sort of low. QB announced tuition rate at 0% increase. That was my recommendation, which was approved tonight. We have an increase in tuition students that we're tuitioning into our high schools and elementary schools, which is resulting in $249,000 additional revenue. And we have two students budgeted for outside placements. Those are based on team decisions, so you'll find some of our tuition payments in the district wide. Looking at the school level, and I'm just identifying the major changes. So Polton Elementary School has a new custodian position built in. It's actually a shared position between the elementary school and the high school, and that position is approximately $51,000. That's salary and benefits.
Can you tell us how many custodians there are currently?
Five and a half, or 5.7 maybe?
There's six positions before this position.
So this is...
One's only a 30-hour position.
Yes.
But this is a full-time position. So this would be 6.7?
Correct. Yep. Yes, that's correct.
And we cut this position a year ago, correct?
This is replacing the position that was cut the previous year. There's things that are just not being able to be done with the current manpower.
Thank you.
Polton High School has requested an addition of a consumer science teacher. That's an estimated cost of $71,000 with salary and benefits, and that's for a full-time position.
And how long has it been since that position has been filled?
This is the first year.
The first year.
This is the first year that it hasn't been filled?
Right.
And what's the desire to bring it back?
I think it's a valuable program for our students. It's, you know, the life skills piece of it as well, just with, it's more than just the cooking and the sewing. They kind of help out with the health aspect of the drug and alcohol awareness, and it's also like a financial piece for that. In the past, we've done, depending on who we get, but the past, two teachers we've had have had science backgrounds, they've been able to do like a food science program, so students can get a science credit in doing the hands-on stuff, but I just, it's, our teacher resigned at the end of last year, and it was just, we were looking for a social studies teacher as well, was trying to, Jay and Jen can vouch for this, I've been saying, you know, if we can kind of share teachers or share staff or something like that to get, but we filled that position with a social studies position, and now we're hoping to try to get that, we don't want to lose that program. We don't want to lose our family consumer science.
So you filled this, this position with the social studies position?
That went unfilled the year before.
Okay.
Yeah, because we had three, we were down to two, and our middle school has almost, our middle school has over 90 students, so we were trying to do a full-time middle school with 90 kids, plus our full high school with just two teachers, and it was, especially last year with COVID, we were having almost over 25 kids in a classroom.
Okay, thank you.
Proctor Elementary School, this is an additional $8,000 in technology for Chromebook replacements.
And when was the last time Chromebooks were updated at Proctor Elementary?
We do it on a yearly basis, actually, and talking with Greg and Neil, there's another round. We do it every year.
So is it $8,000, or $8,000 every year for Chromebooks at Proctor Elementary?
I don't know the cost every year, but I...
No, Chromebook prices are going up, so that's just based on the amount of students this year, it's just the projections next year. And where we usually had $200 Chromebooks, now we're looking at 3, 350, and waiting for them to be assembled, so it's just some proactive increase, increases based on the way the prices have gone.
So how is this only a cost in one school, then?
This is the only school that requested these funds.
Yeah, historically, Proctor Elementary's budget has been lower than other schools in relation to the amount of students, and that usually was a pivot when more of the Proctor funds are available to fund Chromebooks.
No question.
So are Chromebooks built into everyone else's budget?
Yeah, everybody else, they all have a technology budget. Some, they're not all equal, some are larger than others.
So then, why is it, if everyone's built in, how is this a pullout, then? Why wouldn't this just be a common build-in to Proctor Elementary budget?
Well, it is built into their budget, so it's increasing their technology line from 7,000 to 15,000 to cover the replacement cycle. So this wouldn't be a one-time increase, it would be so that they can do a two-classroom cycle each year.
So without me going through everybody, every school, what's, what are other line items, or other technology line items for other schools? So what you're telling me is that her line item has always been too low, and now you're increasing it to be in line with all the other schools?
Yes, this was specifically my recommendation.
West Rutland has 48,000. Proctor High School has about 17, 18,000. Proctor Elementary School would have 15,000 after this increase. Polton High School has 47,000, and Polton Elementary School has 14,500.
Okay, thank you. Mike has a question?
I was just curious, Greg, do we lease those Chromebooks or are they ours?
They're ours.
So what do we do?
Leasing nuclear, yeah, since we repair our own Chromebooks, the technicians are pretty adept at that, so I ran the numbers very, like something like 700 years ago, and it just doesn't pay for us to hold a contract like that.
So what do we do with the Chromebooks when they're not being used anymore?
We give them out to the community, or we e-waste them if it's a security issue, end of life on the machine.
Thank you.
So with the numbers you just gave, Polton High School is 47,000, but West Rutland, which is a K through 12, is only 48,000? The numbers are odd, I think. And how many classes is this replacing every year? Is it two classes every year?
And appropriate enrollment of the students.
No. Are you, are you factoring in that you're going to replace? I'm not asking if it's going to be 40 kids. I'm saying, is it going to be two classrooms every year? Is that what you're budgeting it up on?
Well, there's a lot of variables here, which I don't, I'm not prepared to add the data in the failure rates in relation to what's being damaged and Chromebooks we lose per building per year, and, you know, the replacement parts and the time related to repair them and all the rest of it. So there's not just one moving piece. It's not a direct correlation between two grades and their populations and placement. I always consider, just for the sake of numbers, 25 students per class who are replacing two grades completely, that's just a general rule, and if we get more mileage out of it, then, you know, so much the better. You know, the Chromebooks are constantly being swapped out as they're damaged, and since there's one technician per pre-building, they have a repair queue, you know, and sometimes it's good to have a bank of Chromebooks that are configured similarly to the ones that are in use, and you just swap them out, swap a new one in, and then it goes into the repair queue. So it's all kind of based on the ebb and flow of the, you know, the way the building utilizes its availability, and, you know, the increase or decrease in student population. That's just one variable.
Sarah?
I was just going to ask if the technology budget line covers, is that just for Chromebook replacement cycles, or does it cover other areas as well?
It covers all technology purchases, but not that one line item. Sometimes it's broken up in supplies, sometimes it's, excuse me, annual repairs, sometimes it's, you know, communications. There are several different line items in the technology area. But the line that, the line that this specifically referring to is hardware usually used.
Okay. I was just curious of the larger numbers, since they were run out for every school, the larger numbers, I was curious as to whether those encompass more than just the Chromebooks, and it sounds like they do.
Yes, they do. Like if we lose a server, if there's not enough in the repair budget, I'll take some from the equipment department, or if towards, as the year goes on and it looks like our Chromebook numbers are adequate, then we can go to the principals and say, okay, you've got this much left in the budget, would you like, what are the needs in the building? Oh, I would like another interactive panel. Well, that's my projector diet. And then we can start looking at add-ons based on those.
The amounts that I gave was a combination of both supplies, computers and general supplies. So I said the two numbers. The other thing I'll just add is that those, those amounts, some may have been adjusted post-merger and some not, so when we merged, I mean, each school was coming in with their different amounts pre-merger, and not every line item in this budget has been changed to reflect the new Corry Valley districts, so there's not complete, so not every line reflects like a per-student amount for each school.
Okay, and that was the clarification. It seems like what you're doing, then, with Proctor Elementary is actually bringing them up and putting them, the number on the line that should be there, and what's happened in the past, the budget has relied on local grant funds.
Correct.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm.
Proctor High School, two additions. First one is a full-time council slash behavior position. Our current budget has 70,000 in this budget, and then the second one is... position. Our current budget has 70,000 in this budget. And then the second one is addition of a part-time office assistant. That position is currently working right now. It was added earlier this year, but it's not something that was in this year's budget. So it is an addition for the full-time crew budget.
Okay. And so when we talk about full-time counselor-behavioral position, and we can talk about this in executive session, are we talking about a restructure then or are we simply talking about an additional person?
So I'm talking about an additional person. There was at Proctor, like you would know probably Lisa three years ago, like a teen student that was dealing with behavior. I'm looking for more of like a foods-on-the-ground position that works directly with students. There is a behavioral interventionist, which is kind of hard to find sometimes. Sometimes you're better off finding like a social-emotional counselor that can work with them, push into classrooms, be working with teachers so that we can keep our kids in the room learning at the same time.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
And then for West Rutland, two items is a replacement of the heating system controls, also known as a JACE. And that's got an estimated cost of $70,000. And then adding 35,000 to the books for instruction for a new reading program.
And what is the new reading program?
So the new reading program is a program that we've had for the last two years. It's called My View. It is a K to six program. West Rutland has never had a reading program in recent history. And it is something that our test scores clearly show that we need to work on unifying our reading program. So we have chosen after the last couple of years to do My View. We did a soft increase a couple of years ago where we just took money from another source and purchased the program. I always am conscientious about a program that has a lot of consumables. My View does have some consumables in it. But again, this is a K to six program that's affecting about 175 children. So we're hoping that once we really get into the program, we're going to start to see an increase in our literacy scores.
So I'm presuming that $35,000 for books are books within each classroom?
No, that is soup to nuts for, yes, for every classroom. There are consumables, which is a workbook for each child. There are also materials for the children that they use also, some of which are, can be used year after year. And as I said, the last couple of years, I've been kind of just moving money around to help pay for it. But I'm wanting to go ahead and do a real commitment to literacy at West Rutland School. This is the program that our staff, after a lot of vetting, has decided to go with.
And do we know what the annual fee then is? If, if there are, like you said, workbooks and things like that, what's the uptick to this for the following year?
You know, it's going to be somewhere between 25 and 35, depending upon the actual number of children that we have at the school. So it's actually a per, per-child purchase. It's not a flat rate.
25 to 35,000 dollars a year?
Yes.
So everything you're buying every year is used? I, I.
Yes. So when we purchase the program, there are also, there's also an online component to this as well, which has been actually very beneficial during remote learning. But yes, there, there are definitely consumables that fit into this that, that's, my, my last school, which was a little, was quite a big figure, probably double the number. I was spending 75,000 on a math program a year. We're not even close to that at West Rutland.
How many different reading programs do we have through Corey Valley?
That I do not know. I cannot answer that.
What's the program at Proctor Elementary?
So for our primary K through degree, we use foundations and also R and W. And then we just have a little workshop and all that for the rest of the district. So our program has K six.
And what about Polten Elementary?
Polten Elementary uses foundations, grades K through two, and as an intervention in grades three. And we have reading street, grades two through six.
Okay, thank you.
For the, for the record, I do want to say that we are using foundations, grades K to two as well.
Okay, thank you.
The one commonality that we've really pushed for this year to have that common experience for the children.
Great.
And also Lindsay Ryder, our literacy coach for the district, is working on, I would say, name streaming of literacy between all schools. Kristen can see more of that, but I do know that kind of been focused in the chief of hand observing schools from across the SU to get some consistency across to us.
Okay. Kristen Ross?
That was kind of part of my question was, are we looking at across the schools, how we're all doing it, what are our programs? And then it sounds like that we're working on that. So that's great. And then my other piece was, do those programs, foundations and the other programs, do they have the similar kinds of costs? Is this, you know, sort of what you pay for these kinds of programs across the board? Or is there something in particular about this one day that you have found super beneficial for using it the last, I think it's two years or a couple of years?
Yeah, it's actually just been two years. So it's hard to say that we've got longitude moved out of, especially during COVID. If Lisa Madison's on the call, she could tell you what foundations goes for. I know, I think we spent about $30,000 this year. But we also, this was our first year. So there are a lot of things that needed to be purchased with that that were one-time-only purchases. I see Christine nodding or add to.
Yeah, foundation has very limited control. There's not workbooks that we're going to put up. And this R and W is kind of a one-down type of thing as well.
Yeah.
If you look at the books lines for the other schools, they're not that much. I'm not sure how much of that book line is being spent on, on their reading programs, but they are small.
What page are you on, Louis?
So like Polten Elementary School would be on page two. On their instruction, they have 10,000, actually it's, they have 10,000 budget, my proposed budget's bringing up to 7,500. At Proctor, I think they only have 1,000 budget for books. That's on page six. They have 1,100 budgets of books and 2,000 for software.
But that's not just literacy, correct? That's.
Correct. That's.
Math. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So just moving on to, just quickly, another one to all, you know, just a few things I'll point out. So starting on page two, there's a, there's a few places we're going to be in the budget where ones are highlighted that just represents that they're pending. They don't have actual amounts yet. We should have those by the next draft in December. So at the top of page two is our revenue, which is up about 4%. It's mainly due to an increase in surplus as well as an increase in tuition revenue. And then if you go through the expenses, that also starts on page two. It's broken down by school and then by function and then by object. So we'll first up Polten Elementary School, then Polten High School, and then Proctor Elementary School, Proctor High School, and then West Rutland. And then within each school, there's, each function is, pretty much the department. And the budgeting tool will give you some of that information as well. So like instruction, health, health department, principal's office. So just going through the columns. The first column is the actuals from last year. The next column is FY '22 budget. That's the current year that we're working in. FY '23 budget, that's the one that we're looking at for this year, that's next year's budget. And then the variance will be the difference between FY '23 and FY '22. Going on to page, page 12 starts district-wide. Those are expenses that are not school-specific. And those are just things like garbette, physical services, land operations is at the district-wide level, transportation and bonds. And then, so we talked about the total on page 14. Page 15 is the summary of our tuition that's coming in based on each, each grade and the towns that are tuitioning in. So currently we're estimating 1,398,000 in tuition revenue. And then page 16 are our regular ed bill backs. These are positions that are funded at the SU level. And then bill backs is because the portion of their salary is grant-funded. So we have a position at Polten Elementary School that's covered 50% through the CFP grant. We have a physician at Proctor Elementary School that's funded 50% through special ed. We have a physician at Proctor High School that's funded, funded 80%. Oh, no, I'm sorry. It's in 0.8 at the E. It's funded 30% through CFP and the other 50% is at the local level. And then we have a physician at West Rutland that's 50% CFP and 50% local. And then the last two pages of the budget are the special ed bill backs. That's what we talked about earlier as the disallow. So you can see all the positions, the special ed positions for each school and the percentage that we're estimating that should be special ed ineligible. Any questions about the budget as a whole? Something that we can cover.
Louis, I just have a question of a number. At the very, the last page, page 18, you just kind of said it, but I was kind of lost in my scrolling here. The special ed bill backs, at the bottom there, you have like over 7,000 for Wellspring, Rutland Town, Corey Valley. And then there's the Corey Valley total. Does that mean, except for those Wellsprings, Rutland Town, and that other Corey Valley line is 29,500? Is that 385,000, is that from all the other grade, the grade highlighted bars from above? Is that that total, what that total is?
Yeah. So each school has their subtotal. And then that last section is shared positions across the SU. So that's our SLPs, OTs, BTs. So they're not school-specific. So those are, the way we did those, we have a total disallowed for those positions, which is 49,000. And we assess those as, as an estimate for now. We assess those based on the assessment percentage or the assessment allocation that each district is paying. So that 29,593 for those shared positions gets added to each of the school totals to get to the total of 385 for Corey Valley.
Okay, Louis, what else did you have?
So for that one, we go onto the next topic, which is the van replacement. So this topic came up at the SU meeting last month. There was a vehicle that was a special ed vehicle that was originally stationed at Proctor High School that was moved to West Rutland based on need. West Rutland was using that vehicle and it was an accident back in October. It was totaled the vehicle. So the insurance company sent us a check for approximately $9,000 to cover the cost of that vehicle. At the SU board meeting, to replace that vehicle, we proposed doing a mixed-use split with 50, approximately 50% special ed funds using that insurance check and then 50% coming from Corey Valley, which would be a regular ed usage. There were some concerns that were expressed at the SU meeting with, because the vehicle was going to have mixed usage crossing over two districts and being funded by two different districts. It was a table to discuss at the Corey Valley meeting. Since then, we've discussed it and reevaluated and would like to bring up a different proposal, just keeping both lines of money separate. What I'm recommending is to, if, if the board approves putting the 20% or some, some set of funds into that athletic fund from the surplus, we'd be using that athletic fund to purchase a vehicle for Corey Valley, which would be used for co-curricular and extracurricular activities. It would be strictly a Corey Valley vehicle. It would be shared amongst all five schools based on, on the needs. Like I said, the priority would be for current extracurricular and co-curricular transporting students to, from one school to another, participating sports or transporting them to sports if they're, if they're smaller teams. If there's clubs or school-based clubs or something that, that are traveling, they, they can use the vehicle for that. So, so my, my suggestion would be to use those athletic funds and purchase that vehicle. And then aside from that, the SU is also looking at purchasing vehicles for special ed out of a special ed grant that we're receiving this year through our money. We're looking at purchasing one, two vehicles. We currently have one special ed vehicle in the SU. We had two until the accident. The one vehicle we have left is at Rutland Town. It is an older vehicle. I believe it's a, I believe it's a 2010. I'm not quite sure about that. We purchased them both at the same time. The other one that was in the accident was a 2010. So that one is aging. Not sure how much life it has left in it, but it definitely is still working at this time. But just due to the size of our SU, we think it's time to, to add at least another vehicle to, to, to the SU to meet our needs. But that's something we'll discuss at the SU level. But I just wanted to give that explanation just because it did come up at the SU meeting and did affect Corey Valley.
So does Polten or Middle Town or Wells, they don't have any special ed transportation?
Polten Elementary School currently has a student that's being transported for special ed. And we're using one of the trucks that we purchased with the ESER funds at this time just because there's not, there's not a special ed vehicle available.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I may have said ESER funds. It was, it was purchased with COVID funds. It was CRF funds. It was prior to, prior to ESER.
Okay.
Question. Jay, how does this affect you?
Right now, we're doing fine, Mike. And that's only because circumstances have changed. So we do have a school-owned van that was purchased with non-special ed funds. It's also about 10 years old. And we just had some, some work done to it. Had circumstances stayed the same, we would be in a very different predicament. About a month ago, we were in dire strait. But some things have happened that I would not be able to say in open session. But we are doing, we're making out with one vehicle at this time because of the need.
There were some repair issues with the van. I needed the other vehicle that West Rutland had. And we were waiting for parts to come in. That was part of the concern. We spoke with the Ford dealership after the SU meeting and they offered for us to use a vehicle at no cost while the West Rutland van was being repaired.
Nice. Thank you.
So are you looking for action this evening or this is simply informational?
We don't need action site. It is mainly informational, follow-up to last meeting. But if that is something that the board is looking for us to move forward with, if they feel that there is a need and agree that there's a need, then I can start that process as soon as the board approves that.
Okay.
Might be some end-of-year deals.
Chances, I think we talked about this before, that car, you know, even used cars or new cars are sort of hard. cars, your new cars are sort of hard to find. I don't know about immediately around here, but do you see getting something immediately?
I would recommend that we order it, which will take a couple months.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else, Louis?
That's all I have for now.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to committee reports, communication committee.
So we did not have our recent meeting. We had to reschedule that, so we're meeting at the end of November. So I don't have anything specific to report beyond what I had last month. So we are going, our next meeting is the 30th of November, and the plan is to start filling in some of the pieces of a larger communications plan, but also looking at, hopefully the finalizing the data from the survey that we had. So, and I frankly haven't looked at the survey recently to see how many, any new response we have, but I think it's pretty much slowing down a few weeks ago. So I think at this point, we should probably take what we can get and look at it and start thinking about, so what do we do with that now?
Okay.
Yeah, so we have a priority list we're working on, but we haven't had another meeting this month yet.
All right. Thank you. All right, moving on to policies. We have a load of policies, and some of them are first read and some of them are second read. So the first read policies are simply policies, if you have any suggestions or changes, and that would be for, excuse me, B4, board commitment to nondiscrimination is a first read, C2, public participation at board meetings is a first read, F6, transportation is a first read, and F11, limited English proficiency students is a first read. Any suggestions, changes, concerns to those that need to go to the policy committee? And if you don't have them this evening, you can email them to either Chris or Eric, who is the chair of the policy committee.
Kristen as well.
Oh, is Kristen on the policy?
Yeah, Kristen Ross.
Or Kristen Ross, who is also on policy. The following are second reads, so a motion will be in order for those at the end. F11, oh, I'm sorry, wrong. A1, the role of policy. A2, policy dissemination, administration and review. B3, board member conflict of interest. C1, board meeting agenda preparation and distribution. F12, weapons and firearms, and this one doesn't have a number, prevention of sexual harassment as prohibited by Title IX. So a motion would be in order to approve the second read policies.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
So for the second read policy, this is approval without changes, in other words?
Correct, as they are presented.
Okay. Thank you.
Sarah, do you have a question on one of the policies that you want us to take a look at?
I did, and that's why I was asking.
Okay.
I'm just unsure procedurally, and it was probably that I was not on the board during the first read, so...
Can you tell us what policy it is?
Yeah, sure. It is...
F12, right?
Let's see, when I'm scrolling through, it's the weapons and firearms policy, I think it was...
F12.
Yeah, sorry, F12, thank you.
Okay. And what page?
Page two.
Okay.
The section that reads sanctions.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so the, in the section, in the sanctions section, which lays out a process for students who bring a weapon but not a firearm, right? So it says weapon, not a firearm, doing part of this is to school. There's a fairly detailed process for that laid out. I didn't see a similarly detailed process described for students who bring a firearm to school. The last sentence of the paragraph kind of hints at a hearing process, perhaps for students who bring a firearm, and a different sanction, expulsion for one year. But I was kind of surprised not to see a detailed hearing process provided for a student bringing a firearm, because that's specifically excluded from the rest of the paragraph. If it's the case that the process is the same, essentially, for a student who bring a weapon, not a firearm, and students who bring a firearm, and only the sanction is different, then I would just suggest that needs to be clarified, so that we have a sense of what the process is for students who bring a firearm.
I think, if I'm remembering correctly, I think part of it was this used to just be a firearms policy, it didn't mention other weapons. And so because of the very first paragraph, sorry, has, you know, statutory language there and references to those, I think that's why the sanctions down below, in that last section of sanctions, is more specific to weapons of arms, firearm, so that it's clear that other things can be weapons too.
Yeah.
We had a policy that covered firearms, but not other things.
Other weapons.
It's, you know...
So can you just point me to the section that talks about the disciplinary process for firearms? Did you just say that? I think I didn't have it open, so I didn't, I didn't see.
No, so I think, again, maybe Chris knows better than I.
Yeah, so, Kristen...
The statute is listed above, in the very first paragraph, the policy would probably talk about the possible expulsion of students who bring a firearm to school, etc.
Ah, 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 ah.
But it's not detailed there, you're right. It's not, the sanctions aren't detailed, it just references sort of the statute, so...
And so maybe in the sanctions, referencing back again to the statute, justice, because otherwise it seems a little unbalanced that we're not describing a sanctions process for that group of students here. But I totally understand what you're saying about that change.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea. Chris, I don't know, do you have any?
No, I, you know, Sarah shared this with me earlier today, and I think in looking back, I think we do need to clearly spell out a separate section in the sanctions with regards to a firearm, or I know when I looked at this, I think I also listed as a destructive device. So I have some language that we can quickly bring back to the policy committee for review, and then we can bring this one back to the boards in December if we want. But I do think, to be honest, I think with something like this, I think we want to make sure it's clearly stated as opposed to hinted at or having somebody try to find it. And I think if just some language being added to the sanctions just for another section in regard to a firearm or a destructive device, then I think that, if that's going to clearly, you know, line out what happens, then I think we should go that route. So, but like I said, it's, you know, it's up to the board, and I have no problem doing that. I can provide the next policy committee meeting, so...
All right, what is...
I'd like to make a motion specifically for F12, that it be set aside, sent back to policy committee to let them review, to bring forward again for us to review at a future date.
Is there a second? No one wants to second thought?
I'll second that, I'll say that sounds fine. I'm sure that would improve it, so...
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So back to approval then for all second read policies without F12.
Make the motion.
Motion by Mike, second.
Kristen Ross will second.
All those in favor?
Any.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you very much, and thank you, Sarah. The next meeting is December 20th. Future agenda items should be sent to Chris or Christina, Christine by December 12th. And we do need to have an executive session for personnel and administrator evaluations. So we are going to, it's 7:22. We'll see, we'll come back at 7:35, 7:40? We need to let him pack everything up. So let's say check back at 7:40, all right?
Lisa, who do you want in the executive session meetings?
Um...
I'm sure who, like, should be there, should they not be there, etc.
I think Jay and Joe Harrington for one discussion.
Are we doing that first? For the first, yeah, well, we'll bring Jay and Joe Harrington back, and then all board members. Okay?